Welcome, Mr. Gary Johnson.
Yep, and just know, we're YouTube live, guys? We're live? We're live, just there, okay.
Okay, thank you for attending today's meeting. If you'd please stand before the flag and show.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great bullet which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no problem. So, they didn't want to leave inside, so they were really using the bar.
Yeah.
But they had outdoor seating for them inside.
Oh, nice.
Some of them, they had a, the jury's creatures and stuff. She liked it. All right, thank you. We've got a technical thing for a moment. All right, so we have no requests. You can open the forum. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report and the reopening plan.
Thank you. Good evening. Just to, I know I shared with the reopening plan, kind of a draft format of you previously in the update, but just to go over it really quick is, addressing the type of questions is, the Center for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics, one of the primary goals of reopening schools is to make sure that all students K-12 are in-person, in-person instruction. And with that, I did see the governor, the new governor came out today, that there will be a universal mandate for mask-wearing well indoors, right? We tell schools for some inconsistency that was going on across school districts in New York. We were going to, this is the plan dedicated to universal mask-wearing in schools, indoors. The, that's really the key piece to that, right? The governor did talk a little bit about vaccinations and indoor tests for school district employees. More will come out, more will come out with that, sure, in the next week. For our sake right now, it's what we would like to share with the public communication-wise, is we'll share with staff tomorrow on the plan that is here with universal mask-wearing, social distancing, physical distancing to the best of our ability. In classrooms will be three feet with masks on, with mask breaks. Anytime that classes can go outside, they can remove their masks. Anytime we can have social, physical distancing of six feet masking for high school too. And we will try to maintain that because we want to minimize any type of quarantine issues, right? We can maintain proper mask-wearing. Then we can really, I'll say minimize the number of quarantines that we're gonna have. So that is the goal of that. We're still working on specifics when it comes to meals. Right now, lunch, I know Mr. Senna, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Matt Carr and I have met now multiple times last week and this week, just working about specifics with it. Is the Director of County Out sick departments, both from Schenck County and Dilver County, really been talking about, well, six feet, it's better than five feet, it's better than four feet, it's better than three feet, but the goal, right, is to keep all students in person K-12, right? So how do you do that, right? So we're looking at different options, right? We know that we don't want to eat in the classroom in the elementary school. So what are some of the locations, the elementary cafeteria, maybe the old cafeteria, right? Spreading things out. We did do an inventory of cafeteria desks, or, I'm sorry, cafeteria tables. We're giving two or three students at each table in two different locations in the elementary school. We can fit an entire grade level between the two with two or three kids, right? Depending on the numbers of classes. And each table spread out. So will it be six feet? No, right? Will it be three feet? No. Will it be in between? Yes. But with that, if it were in six feet, we'll make sure that we have assigned seats so that we know what people will sit in the seats. So if there's any potential quarantine, you're talking about anybody within that six feet. High school, we're looking at our cafeteria in here, as we used last year, to be able to spread out an entire grade level in the cafeteria. We could as well be able to do that. We should be pretty close to the six feet in the high school for that, right? To minimize what we're eating. Anytime there's a student passing the hallways, anything like that, obviously great. High transmission areas, face covering would be required. That's really the big piece of it. As far as school buses go, there's no occupancy restrictions. There will be masks at all time on school buses. You can basically shut windows down as much as possible, but no limitations without occupancy on the school buses. As far as the schedule, we will be in session K-12 five days a week. That is the main goal. Multiple resource, multiple sources stay in that. As far as athletics, because we started athletics, right? And when you're outside, there are no face covering right now required. When you're indoors, for example, volleyball, right? Face covering will be required. Spectators are coming, it's outside, right? There won't be any type of restrictions with spectators coming there, face coverage at this time, right? I don't know what the government will come out in the next week or so, but will not be required. One of the changes, we will not be doing the health screens. We will not be doing the temperature checks coming in. They're really inconclusive with the idea of what their purpose was. So we will not be doing that. We will be using designated locations where kids are coming in, but no health screening, the temperature check. That just allows us to be able to control traffic totally, and actually work quite nicely. I think not much has changed with regards to management of ill persons. What we'll do, we'll still have an isolation room in the elementary. We only have one isolation room for the district. Previously, we had, this last year, we had one in the high school and one in the elementary school. We don't really see the need of that. I actually was on a conference call today with School Based Health Clinic, and they will actually see ill people with COVID symptoms right in the school base. That is a change for that this year. Not really as of today, not that we have the protocols there. Contact tracing, Mr. Senna has been designated as a COVID coordinator. Did such a good job last year, we wanted to make a redo of it for next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, and that's, that really, I know last year, he was like 24/7, 306 county weeks. All weekend, right, contact tracing, things like that, so I know he's looking forward to that this year.
But you sound like you're taking the experience. You're, you're on the front.
Can't wait to put that on my resume. I know that's a good thing. But as far as contact tracing, very similar to what we do if we get symptomatic, right? Does possibly report, right, to the health department from a school district perspective. Same with the health department, they contact us and we begin what we did last year. And then the return to school protocol, which is in there as well too, there's nothing that is different really with the return to protocol, recharge to school protocol. If you get your symptomatic or not symptomatic and being quarantined. So, and that's part of our plan. This is really an addendum to the reopening plan. We're calling just the opening plan for 2022, the addendum for that. And we're still working on some logistical things with regards to breakfast. We know that we can designate areas, like the high school library, cafeteria in the high school. We know that we can designate the elementary cafeteria. It may be breakfast in the classroom, can be doable because when the kids are coming in and out, they don't all come at the same time, so we're still working on some logistics with that. But again, elementary breakfast likely will be in the classrooms. More of the specifics to that. Will it always be six feet? No, right? I mean, but to keep everybody K-12 in, that's what we're gonna have to do. So, again, I think the way it was described, and I think it was a pretty good way to describe it, is six is better than five, five is better than four, do the best that you can, right? So, that's kind of the big picture of that. And with that, I'd like to be able to communicate to staff tomorrow morning, to get a message out to the community, a school message call tomorrow night, 5:30. Kind of a summary of that, that we will be in person K-12, universal mask-wearing. It does help everybody get out that this is what we're going to do. We did have a tremendous amount of support though. School Based Health Clinic had heard that in schools, a letter had just gotten today, actually, in support of universal mask-wearing, CTC's recommendations, like we get from pediatrics, regulations, everything. But we had heard from them that the governor's going to come on and make some sort of statement, a universal statement. And if there'll be more to come, I believe her words were clear, precise, clear, concise, uniformed plan for school. And her message is seven minutes, so we'll see what that brings about, you know, much more than that, so. But that would be the addendum to our reopening plan. Again, K-12 in person, we'll do the best we can with physical distancing and then universal mask-wearing. Mr. Senna, did this anything with that?
As far as staff goes for, and students who are vaccinated, again, they're not really requiring any sort of quarantine for vaccinated staff member or student unless they're symptomatic. I think that was a big piece to it too. And a lot of these distancing requirements are for students, in our little department for staff. We're gonna be a little bit more strict with staff, but again, as was emphasized and reiterated numerous times in the reopening guidance, trying to keep students in school, in person as best as possible. So requirements are a little bit more lenient for students as opposed to staff.
Any, any questions with the addendum?
Do you want to just give a brief update about the actual program?
Sure. Yep, absolutely. And Mr. Hanson can go on a chime in a little bit too. So, after school program, we initially had said that we were gonna be getting the enrichment program the Tuesday after, Wednesday, which I believe was like October 12th. And in conversation, right, with the board and getting some feedback is, it was really needs to start the first day at school, right, for childcare needs within the community. And immediately, we met with Mr. Hanson and Mrs. Johnson. We got together and said, okay, what can we do and how can we do it? So what we've done right now is we surveyed the staff. We know that we have seven people that are willing to work as states right now, which is allowed, which allows us to do not as in-depth enrichment plan as what we will do come October 12th, but we'll be able to put together an enrichment type of offering if we go after school care right now, starting on Thursday, Thursday at school. There'll be a family ID, very similar to the, what we did for summer camps and fall registration for athletes. Hopefully, yeah, summer event. And then, like I said, fall athletes. Hopefully, we'll be able to roll that out by Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday. We'll do a school message call Thursday, let them know after school, you don't care. Please register through family ID. So we should have that out for Thursday, and we will be able to do transportation with Mr. Russell with that. And we'll be able to do transportation is what we did, and we're gonna run it till 5:00, 5:10 as we've done that. So we should be up and running for Thursday. So appreciate the feedback, appreciate, you know, the information on that. And Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Petlowich, Mr. Hanson, right, Mr. Russell, right, we got together quick. He said, what can we do? Will it be as in-depth, will it be as polished as what we would like on the 12th? No. But will it be able to provide service for the community through after-school, childcare?
Any other questions about the reopening plan? And I think that question was asked to a point about our, the pre-K component, and they're following the state's standard.
Yep, yep, so the following, the coma protocol is. Yep, yep.
Anyone else? Do you use the actually officially accepted plan or?
No, there was no approval. Really just wanted to make sure that it was understood, that what was, that we all had consistent messaging. And I also like that we waited a little bit, right? We weren't in a rush to get this out two weeks ago, right? Let's, we didn't see, and, you know, Mr. Senna said this all along, I think, for the last year and a half or so. It's like, listen, we don't have to be the first, but let's be accurate, right? So let's not have to say something retracted because we didn't wait or didn't, you know, just be patient with us. And again, it was a message that was shared on hundreds of school message calls about, you know, thank you for your patience and support. There's a lot to being patient, right? And, you know, we didn't come out and do something, have your retracted really governor's message, right? We knew that there was gonna be something that came out with that. So, again, I like our timeline, I met with the union about the communication to staff with this. We'll go tomorrow morning, right, send it out to staff, and then we'll send it out to the community tomorrow. Kind of just peace of mind that we have a big open person, this is what you can expect, universal mask-wearing, stuff like that. So just appreciate the support that's been shown from the patients that have shown, and making sure that we work. Timing on that.
Connor, do you need a quick?
Uh, no, go ahead, she's lady first.
Oh. All right. Moving on to the minutes. Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes for the regular form of education being held on August 10th, 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Care to? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Care to? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? Resolve upon the superintendent of schools to approve the annual tax levy for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented. Discussion?
Just, for example, we had this approved, the 1.23% back in May. There was a lot of uncertainties with what we just didn't know. And Mr. Pavlovich, right, we were meeting throughout the spring and beginning to have some conversation that, you know, we did a good job last year of being conservative with the budget. And I think it is a responsible thing to do as a school district. You go out as a zero percent, down 0.23%. On the next, the next action item, which is new, and I mean, I forgive you, this is new to go up to a zero percent after a tax being approved, the tax levy being approved, is we have to appropriate what would have been the new money, if you will, from the tax, like a 1.23%, which was $75,410. So you have to approve the increase in appropriated fund balance because we approved that at 1.23% back in May. So that's where that action item is from there. I didn't know that at the time to be able to do that. Thanks, Mike, for, you know, coaching me and teaching me this stuff. And as I mentioned, I think it's a responsible thing to do. We're not always gonna be able to do that, but I think it's a good thing for our community at this time. So that's the next action item to queue would be what, the levy would have been increased to, for the increase to 1.23% of appropriate the junk money.
Do we know, I know part of this is even though we're going to zero, some people may see an increase in the taxes because of properties coming off the tax roll and then being spread over all the rest of the property. Do we know how many are coming off of that?
Well, if they weren't, it actually sold a year to year change. So the only one that's falling off, I believe, is the housing bill. The other five municipalities are actually decreasing. It has a little bit more to prove, the assessed value within each municipality. Plus there was equalization adjustments for each. So it's kind of a three-pronged problem.
But we did, so a couple of years ago, I met with a community member and we had done zero percent. And they had asked, well, you know, the school tax is going to 10%. I said, well, it's not accurate, actually, zero percent, right? We didn't increase the tax, right? Really what it was, was, I can't remember the exact number, but I'll say a number of homes, right, were taken down and the overall assessed valuation dropped by, don't quote me, but I'll say almost $690, right? And that has to get redistributed amongst everybody. Yeah, so it's not that the school tax is enough, right? It's that the same amount of money has to be collected, it's dispersed amongst everybody. Yeah, so once we did some education with that, then it was like, okay, not that they're happy, but they understood it. Am I talking to the mayor about this, too? Is that, you know, do we do some sort of joint message so that it's consistently communicated that it's not the school's necessary taxes going up, right, that's causing that, right? But it's a compounded issue, if you will, with why some people's taxes go up even though it's zero percent.
Well, and you said for the majority of the municipalities, they're all going down except for the main syndrome?
Yeah.
Sydney dropped a little bit.
That was not true.
And it's, it was based on assessment? You said it was based on, you said three-pronged assessment was the main driver on the model?
Yeah, but you can set a tax limit, you don't need to. I don't know how much you want from this town, and I talked for an hour about this.
No? You gotta give us the elevator pitch version.
So basically, the school sets a tax limit. Pick a number, in this case, it's 69130917. But then as the tax rolls come in, one municipality will notice went to 100% equalization rate. People are always worried about if you're set at 100%, it actually helps you out. Some of them dropped. So if you look at the equalization rate column, there's that interplay within the five municipalities. And then, you know, what we've always liked to discern clearly with Sydney is that you do have the homes being taken back. So you have, think about it, you have your piece of the pie, and you have, you have a smaller piece of the pie because you're taking those homes back. So I think in Sydney, it dropped about a million dollars. What was really intriguing to me out of this year, tells me what fast-paced life I live. If you look at the bottom number, though, out of that, the assessed valuation of the Sydney Central School District actually went up. So it's a win because you're spreading that tax, school tax over a larger portion in this case. So it comes down to a pretty body problem. What is your school tax levy? What is the municipality's equalization rates? And what is the assessed value of individuals, municipalities, that is, I mean, Sydney Central School District?
Well, I wondered if, as hard as the real estate market is right now, the assessed value, a lot of properties are going up. And I was wondering if, you know, with all the sales and the comps and everything else, if that would, you know, absorb a lot of that difference.
We can, feel free to bring your tax bill in and sit with Mr. Pavlovich. But every.
I was parrying the two.
Any other questions about the tax? Okay. All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? And if you want to pass that down, we can start signing it. Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve increasing the appropriated fund balance for 2021, 2022 by $75,410. All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the resolution authorizing commencement of e-cigarettes and vaping litigation as presented. Any discussion?
Do you have a kind of a response ability to work with this?
What was in the initial email from Susan Johns from Florida that talked about some information gathering, document gathering, things, if we had cases? You want to take your case?
I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
I was actually gonna say, I don't want to put it on the spot, but this is Heather Paul from Florida. Who's just helping us with the treaty.
Yes, so I can just let you know that this is, this is litigation targeted the fact that Juul cigarettes were aligned to, they were marketed to children, right? So the purpose of this litigation is to create a class of school districts nationwide that can band together, sue the maker, and hopefully repoup some costs that can then be used to defray the use of e-cigarettes and Juuls in particular in your schools, things like, you know, vape detectors and other things like that. In order to opt into the litigation, you have the information in front of you, there's a resolution, there's a law firm that has spearheaded the effort and is representing all school districts that elect to become part of the class. Our office would essentially serve as a liaison between that law firm and you as a school district to the extent any communications were needed. But it really is as simple as you adopting a resolution, joining the class. If there is a settlement with the class of school districts that are participating, you would receive a chunk of the settlement after the attorneys take their, their fee as representing the school districts in the litigation. So it does seem like that relatively rare win-win situation where it doesn't cost you anything to opt in and you may receive a share of a settlement in the end that could be used to defray costs associated with keeping those sorts of devices out of your schools.
This has been done in other states, right?
I was just gonna say, there was a relatively large settlement recently. I don't remember if it was North Carolina or South Carolina. Yeah, and so it's entirely possible that something like that would happen with regards to school districts in New York State.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna.
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Anyone stating? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2021, 2022 Sydney Central School District Professional Development Plan. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? Resolve upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the STA Summer Movement Memorandum of the Program as Presented. Any discussion? I just want to thank all those staff and the teachers that took this time to, their classes over the weekend. And I, and it's something, it's little bit we can do to thank them, but I just want to thank them all for their time. I know that they all did this without having to build this in place and weren't expecting it, so.
Is this from moving all their stuff back to their normal rooms from the org here with gyms and all that?
Two-fold. Yeah, two-fold. So anybody that moved last year, right, as a result of COVID, anybody moved this year as a result of COVID. And I met with Paula Dwyer, Michelle Lyons, it's a great idea that they had, is saying, hey, is there something that we can do? And they put together a good proposal. I think that makes complete sense. And so if anybody had a move as a result of COVID from here to here, we will from last year to this year. And yeah, they're moving their stuff, they're backing up again and moving to another location. So it's a lot of work. I mean, it's eight hours per employee, $34 an hour, about $272 up, too, right? Expires at the end of August, August 3rd person. Just, I think it's, it's, it recognizes their efforts, right? And it was a small joke, but it recognized their effort, shows appreciation. And I think it's, I think it's a great thing to do.
Any other discussion?
Just out of curiosity, what would have, what would have happened if they didn't come in to do that?
Teachers would have done it. They would have done it nights and weekends and they would have found time to do it. They would have done it the first couple of days of school, but most of them come in at nights and weekends and everybody. So I said, it's a nice, it's a nice joke of appreciation.
We're ready to do it.
Yeah, they would have, and they did it on their own time?
Yep.
All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? Resolve that the Board of Education approves the Civil Service Law Section 75 charges brought by the superintendent of schools against non-instructural employment in the district. Be a further resolve that the Board of Education hereby appoints David Grasso as choir to serve as the Civil Service Law Section 75 hearing officer. Mr. Grasso shall issue his findings and recommendations to the Board of Education and shall be paid as usual in customary pay for services rendered. Discussion, whether there's a discussion, I think we have to go to executive session, so.
There's nothing new with the, another day to do, yeah. Just mixed up.
All those in favor? Oppose? Abstaining? Carried? Word number one.
Oh, Delmar, you have some Delmar comments? Oh, Sydney, yeah. That was so great.
Congratulations.
I think we did it with one. Oh, it was in the paper? We'll just do it every month to get new word.
It was, it was a very nice surprise and thank you, Anna, for the nice words that you shared at the meeting. Yeah, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Motion Twitter? All those in favor? Oppose? Carried? Thank you. Thank you for your.